Hello and welcome to the Lakeville City Council Candidate Forum brought to you by the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce. I would like to welcome those in the room and those watching via livestream through rebroadcast. The Chamber is hosting three candidate forums this year. Lakeville City Council, Lakeville Independent School District 194 School Board, and a joint forum for House of Representatives District 57A and 57B. We would like to thank the city of Lakeville for the use of City Hall for all three candidate forums, as well as livestreaming and rebroadcasting the recordings throughout the election season. I am Amy Ergenbrack with Thrivant. I am the immediate past Chair of the Chamber's Board of Directors, and I will serve as tonight's moderator. The timekeeper for tonight's forum will be Colleen LeBeau of LeBeau &amp; Associates and a Lakeville Chamber Access and Issues Group member. It is the mission of the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce to serve as the advocate, resource, and leader for our nearly 600 members and the entire Lakeville business community. In accordance with our mission, we conduct these forums each election season so that you may get to know the candidates who will like to represent and serve our businesses and our residents. We invited all three Lakeville City Council candidates to join us for this forum. The candidates in attendance, who have been seated by random draw from my left, are John Bermal, Dan Walter, and Drew Boxrude. Thank you all for your desire to serve and for participating in this forum. The format for this forum will be as follows. Candidates were sent a list of potential questions in advance. We will random draw the questions, asking as many as we can and have time for with the understanding that I, as the moderator, have the discretion to ask one additional question if I choose. To our live audience in attendance, thank you for being here. We will not be taking any audience questions, so we do encourage you to reach out to the candidates individually if we do not address topics for which you would like more information. We do also ask that our in-person audience at City Hall please respect each of our candidates and our streaming viewers by refraining from noises and remarks that will disrupt the format and detract from the ability to meet each of our candidates. Each candidate will receive two minutes for introductions and opening remarks, two minutes to respond to each question, and two minutes for closing remarks. With 15 seconds remaining in each candidate's allotted response time, the timekeeper will hold up a yellow card, and when time has expired, they will hold up a red card. If you continue past your allotted time, I will ask you to finish your statement. With each new question, we will start with the next clockwise candidate. Each question will be directed to all candidates. This is a forum, not a debate. We do recommend that you use your allotted time to answer the questions as they relate to you and your candidacy, and not to comment or respond to another candidate's answers. We also ask that you respect each candidate and their allotted time, and do not make comments to, during or directly following their answer period. This forum is intended to get to know each of you and why you want to serve our community. With that being said, are there any questions? Wonderful. Let's get started. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening remarks, so let us begin with our first candidate, John Bermal.
Good afternoon. My name is John Bermal. I was elected to the City Council in 2020, and I am running for election in this election cycle for reelection, and it would be a privilege to continue to serve our community on the City Council. I want to just take a moment to thank the Chamber for putting this together. These forums are valuable. They're a good way for people watching to get to know the candidates and to do some research. A couple of things about me personally. I have lived in Lakeville for 34 years. My wife, Chris, and I raised our two adult children here. They went through Lakeville schools, all of the things that Lakeville has to offer. I always said we haven't just lived in Lakeville, we've embraced life here in Lakeville. And this Lakeville thing works. The kids are off and on their own and doing well. I also have two dogs, Chester and Cairo, so if you've ever walked on Ippava Avenue across from Christina Huddleston, you hit a plastic fence, you've met our dogs. Professionally, I am the chaplain at the Fountains at Hosanna, which is a senior living community right here in Lakeville. Prior to coming to the Fountains, I was the Director of Security and Emergency Management at Carleton College in Northfield, and prior to that, I served a 33-year career in law enforcement for the Apple Valley Police Department, retiring as a captain and having experience handling municipal budgets and making those tough choices. And it's a privilege to be here, and I hope you all get to know each of us through this forum.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Dan, excuse me, Dan Walter.
Thank you, Amy, and I want to also thank the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce for putting on this forum and the other ones. It's a huge investment, I know, for you in civic engagement, and I know, as these other candidates can attest, there's not a lot of easy ways to get attention for a City Council race, to make people understand who you are and to share the issue. So I appreciate that. I also want to thank the other candidates that are here. It takes a lot to put your name on a ballot and to do the work and knock the doors and seek higher office, and our community is better because of all of us running for this office. I am Dan Walter. I'm the newest member of the Lakeville City Council. I have served for about 21 months now, so when it's less than two years, like with a baby, you talk about it in months, so if we get the two-year mark, we'll start talking about it in terms of years. People often ask, "Why did I seek a seat on the City Council?" My response to that is pretty simple. Like about half the people in Lakeville, I'm new here. I chose to come to Lakeville because of the quality of life, because of safe streets, low taxes, great parks, a vibrant arts community, and all of the great quality of life things that draw people here. My goal on the City Council is to work every day to help protect and enhance that and make sure that this is an outstanding place for people to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Boxrude.
Hello, Drew Boxrude. Echo their comments. Well, thank you for hosting us all. Start out with myself, my wife, and my two children have lived here in Lakeville for about nine and a half years, and running for council is something that's always kind of been in the back of my head, something I've always wanted to do, and careers I've had in the past have always kind of led me down that road. I worked with, had a line of health in their EMS division. I ran their comm center for 13 years, I think, and recently now I'm working for Woodbury in their engineering department as one of their project coordinators, so I've kind of seen how the whole city government works from the other side, and that really is what kind of pushed me to want to do this finally, and just from being, seeing how everything's done from the inside. It's really something that I pride myself on is working through decisions logically, and I feel like that's something I can really bring to the table, and having, providing everybody with a choice to have three candidates, I think, is important. So yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for those opening remarks. Now we are going to move on to our candidate questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. I'm going to randomly draw the questions, and this question is going to be about transparency. And then we will start with Dan Walter. Transparency is a key to good governance. How do you plan to ensure there is transparency regarding decisions and directives in our community by both staff and council?
Thank you for the question, Amy. I think the first, most important part of that is for council members to be ambassadors of city government and what's happening in city government, to take ownership of the deliberations that we have on issues and projects and so forth, to be out in the community and available, so that, you know, it's not a lot of, you don't get a lot of automatic feedback on things. You need to seek it out many times. We have rigorous transparency laws in this state as well, and so everything that we do is actually transparent. But as we all know, you know, I've been on the council, as I mentioned, 21 months. I can count on one hand the number of public hearings I've been in that have had people at them. I think, Amy, you were at two of them, actually, so I appreciate that. So I think there's also an obligation for constituents and the citizens of Lakeville to be engaged and be aware as well. But first and foremost, it's about the elected officials, it's about being out and available and transparent, and also just seeking feedback on the issues that are, that we're considering, whether it's franchise fees or whatever. We need to, when we're out in the community, ensure that we're seeking feedback and people's thoughts on those issues.
Thank you.
Well, as far as transparency goes, I think the answer to the question is part of the question. Transparency is key, and I agree with Dan that a lot of, a lot of what is done in council is required to be transparent, and it should be. Nearly everything that a council does is required to be transparent. I mean, there's only a few times when councils are allowed to have closed-door meetings, you know, for things that shouldn't be public, like negotiations for contracts and things like that, but that information gets public eventually anyways. So all that is open for the public, it's just a matter of people wanting to engage and get that information. As far as staff go, there's a lot of directives that are given by council or by the city administrator. I'm not sure how much of that is available to the public. Some of that is a little bit hard to find. It would be great if that was more widely available for everyone. And then as far as the public goes, for transparency, the city does a great job with engagement, and it's, again, like Dan said, it's kind of on the public on how much they want to become involved and how much they want to engage with the council and with staff to become involved and be a part of the process. The more they're a part of the process, the more transparency is there.
Thank you. Moving on to John Bermal.
Great question, and I think it's a significant question. I think the first key to transparency is being involved and being available. It is very difficult to hide something or be secret when there's a personal connection. So personal connections are critical to transparency and open communication from that. The other thing is to be clear. I believe that it's best to use clear, simple language, even in complex issues. There are issues that are very complex, but I think citizens and I think staff want to hear plainly and clearly what's on our minds, and we want to hear the same, and the constituents want to hear the same thing to the people. Also, it's important to be accountable. Defensiveness is not helpful for accountability or for transparency. We need to listen, and even if we don't agree with what somebody's saying, I think it's very important to really hone in on that and listen and try to get somebody's perspective. If we get defensive right away or start to argue, there's no transparency there, because transparency is a two-way street. And then, you know, take responsibility. You can't just say, "Well, you know, I tried my hardest, but it just isn't possible." It's, I think we need to take responsibility for our comments, we need to take responsibility for our votes, and we need to be able to look at people and go, "This is why I did this." I also agree totally that it's a two-way street. Everything here is available. Every meeting, there's a lot of chairs in the chambers here, there are broadcasts, you can sit in here. Every meeting, we give the opportunity for public comments, so I would invite our community to do that, and I think those are the keys to solid transparency.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. This one is going to be about taxpayers. Lakeville continues to be one of the fastest-growing cities in Minnesota, and the demand for amenities, services, and public safety resources is constantly increasing. For years, Lakeville has experienced such growth because of its competitive tax and fee position. In recent years, and with current proposals on property taxes and fees, it appears this competitive edge may be waning. How will you work to address the needs of Lakeville in a way that does not overburden taxpayers and continues the growth the community has enjoyed? We will start with Drew Boxrude.
Thank you. In my work with Woodbury in the engineering department and also at Illina EMS, we were participants in grants and partnerships, and I think that is a huge source of income that the city has already tapped into, and that is something that they should continue to do. Everybody likes free money. Free money does come with strings at times, so it has to be careful, because sometimes that free money does have some strings to it that are a little bit more, a little bit more onerous than they should be. But that's definitely something that should be, continued to be pursued quite a bit. Also, the franchise fees that have already been looked into is something that I think is a great thing to be looked at, and it can be done selectively. Many other cities of our size and similar demographics already have franchise fees like this. We're one of the few that don't, that is of this size and in this area in our region. And like I said, it can be done selectively, so it's not hitting everybody the same way. And then I think if we did our, if we do our tax rate growth slowly enough, it can be done in a way that doesn't, doesn't eat away at that, at that benefit that we have right now of having such a low tax rate, because we do have a very low tax rate compared to the rest of the county, and our county has a low tax rate compared to the rest of the counties in the state. So even if we do have our tax rate increase some, it will be still lower than much of our surrounding communities.
Thank you. Moving on to John Bermal.
I want to start just by, I really want to take a moment to acknowledge the economic pressures that our community is feeling. As I door knock, I hear this time after time after time. I was door knocking with a couple that came home from the grocery store. We had a long talk. People are feeling inflation, they're feeling prices, and this is a huge issue to people. And so I just, I want to recognize that. I agree, our tax capacity rate has been the lowest in the county for years. This year, we'll see how things shake out. If it isn't the lowest, it'll probably be number two. So we are in a great tax, a great tax position, and people, I want people to recognize that. In terms of strategies for keeping us competitive, I see three things. One of them is just partner opportunities, opportunities that we have to invite outside agencies to help fund our initiatives. A great example of that is the SAFER grant. We just got awarded that grant, which will be very helpful as we move our fire department to a hybrid department. That will help defuse a significant part of the cost for at least three years. I think we remain strong in our fiscal policies. Lakeville is unique. We have a finance committee that gives some solid advice. We have fiscal policies that address our surplus, our budget surplus, it addresses our debt levels. Those policies have earned us, in the time that I've been on the council, a triple-A credit rating. And finally, just maintain that triple-A bond rating with good savings and good financial policies. People want transparency, and they want to know what they're paying for, and I think that's the biggest thing.
Thank you, John. Moving on to Dan Walter.
I want to start off by acknowledging, Lakeville is already in an extremely strong competitive position. We do have the lowest tax rate in Dakota County. We have no franchise fees now, whereas most of the communities around us have had those for quite some time to fund everything from public safety to streetlights. And as John said, I totally agree and totally can understand and relate to the pressures people are feeling. It's tough out there with interest rates high, the cost of feeding your family and living in a home is high, so that just weighs on me heavily every time we talk about fees or levies. And I think that's the most important, important part of this discussion, is to make sure we're understanding how it impacts people. With that said, we have enormous challenges in front of us, especially in the public safety area, with the growth of this community, we're at 75,000 people. We haven't kept pace in terms of police. Most people don't know we have a part-time, paid-on call fire department that we're gradually transitioning to a hybrid one. Those are going to be some big investments, and we need to be mindful of that, and we need to make sure we're clear in communicating to people the value of those, just like I'm hearing from people at Doors, the importance of the quality of life, I'm hearing, or excuse me, the pressures economically, I'm hearing concerns about public safety and the need to ensure we're making those investments. So it is a really tough balancing act. I think the onus of this question, I think, probably goes back to the current franchise fee discussion, and I was, I will say, I went into the discussion on it as a proponent of it, because I think it's a, it's a new and innovative way to fund some of city government. One of the concerns that I keep hearing, especially from people in the business community, is that it is putting part of city government on autopilot. We pass it once and then let it go for 20 years, so we don't have that deliberation each year. So that's of concern to me, and I have to admit, I'm somewhat undecided on that issue right now, so I'd love to hear from people as to what they think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our next question, we will start with John Bermal. This one's on strategic priorities. Envision Lakeville was created to serve as a roadmap for the future of the city. How have the community values and strategic priorities of Envision Lakeville been carried out and what still needs to be addressed?
Well, I think what's been carried out in what we've done well is just a sense of community and belonging. People thoroughly like living in Lakeville, and this community has changed. I mean, I've been here for 34 years, but even in the last couple of years, this community has changed. In the last year, I've been to a Diwali celebration, a Chinese New Year celebration, a cricket tournament, and one of our newest showcase parks is going to have a cricket pitch in it. So I think that we're doing very well in welcoming diversity into our community, and I just, people appreciate the small-town feel that we have in Lakeville. It's a large city, but you still feel like you live in a small town. I hear that frequently. In terms of natural resources, our park referendum made some improvements to trails and to Ritter Farm Park, so we have a host of natural resources available, and we have a high-quality life here. People rate that high. In terms of improvement, some diversified economic development, it would be good to see more commercial development, more robust, represented in the community, in a connected community. In terms of Lakeville, this has always been a bother. We have three ZIP codes, three city addresses, and three school districts that we are. There are people that live in Lakeville that, quite frankly, I'm not sure they realize they live in Lakeville, and I think that the more that we can educate people and have them understand that, the more like our business area, especially our downtown, would be used. And housing options. One person out of every five who works in Lakeville lives here, and it would be good to have some housing options where we can increase that number and keep our Lakeville money in Lakeville with people living and working here.
Thank you. Moving on, Dan Walter.
I just want to echo what John said about people sometimes being confused as to where they live because of the ZIP code issue, because I went to somebody's door, and she argued with me for a while that she lived in Rosemont. So I'm relatively new to the community. We had to have that discussion, so I totally agree on that. Every business, every level of government, every nonprofit needs to have a strategic plan and vision. Envision Lakeville is that for the city of Lakeville. I believe it was 2013 that it was first passed and has been updated every five years since. I think we do a good job in ensuring that every action, everything we vote on fits under that umbrella and how it relates into each of the five strategic priorities outlined under Envision Lakeville. I had the opportunity before serving on the council to serve on the Cultivate a Sense of Community Task Force, which was a special task force created just to focus on that, that one piece, the sense of community, and I had the opportunity to chair that group as well. It was a wonderful experience to get to see the diversity of Lakeville, how this, this community has gotten richer culturally and in terms of diversity and faith and the array of qualities there. Much of what we looked at for that was, we met with the folks from Panaprog, we met with the Arts Center to find ways that we could strengthen the multicultural aspects of things, and I'm proud of what's happened in that front. Panaprog has had a number of the cricket tournament, the Asian Food Festival last year, and then the Arts Center has also diversified quite a bit that they do for the Summer Concert Series. So I'm proud to see that. I think that's important. It is, for me, the priority, probably the biggest piece out of Envision Lakeville that we need to work on is that sense of belonging and placemaking. That is one that's always going to, for any community that's bringing in new people, that's going to be an issue of concern and something we need to continue to work on.
Thank you, Dan. Drew Boxrude.
I want to start with, if you haven't read through some of the information on the Envision Lakeville, go read it, it's really interesting. I read through a bunch of the 2023 update that's on the city website, and some of the responses to all of the citywide survey is really interesting. I love reading through that stuff. Some of the answers to the survey about why they love Lakeville is great. We love the small-town feel, but we still get to have all the great services of being in a city. You know, how do we, how do we keep all those great services but keep the small-town feel? You know, all these issues that, you know, how do we play both sides of that coin are the same things that are coming up in a lot of second-ring suburbs like Lakeville. So that's something that most cities are dealing with. How do we, how do we keep the small-town feel but at the same time be really welcoming to everybody else that hasn't traditionally lived in the second-ring suburb? A lot of the wording changes that they had recommended and adopted from that 2023 update to be more inclusive, I think, is awesome. I don't know if that was part that you were on, but if it was, great work. All right. Just, I think, I think that was awesome, just because words matter and how it's worded really, really makes it truly inviting to people on how, how they're seen and how they want to be, how they want to be heard in the community. One other thing that I thought was really interesting from the Envision Lakeville report was that it mentioned our debt, and I think that is something really important, is that we have a very low debt in Lakeville, and I think that's something very important to keep going. John mentioned the triple-A rating, and I think that is very important to keep going.
Thank you. With our next question, Dan Walter will start, and this one is going to be on connection. Given that the Lakeville Chamber is a business advocacy organization, tell us specifically about your connection and involvement in the local business community.
Thanks, Amy. So I actually am, I work for a company that I believe is one of, if not the largest employer in Lakeville, depending on what day do you look at. So I was involved with the Chamber before serving on the City Council and engaged in those activities. Also, at the state level, I'm incoming Chair for the Minnesota Retailers Association, so specifically have expertise, I guess, in connections on the retail sector, which I know is really important to us as well. As a council member, I have really, I saw the Chamber of Commerce as being a great opportunity to immerse myself in the business community ever since starting in January of 2023. I think there's been maybe two ribbon cuttings in that time that I haven't, haven't attended, and there have been a lot. There's no better way to see how this community is growing and thriving than getting to go to the, you know, grand opening of a new tattoo parlor downtown or a dog grooming business, so I appreciate that. And I think it's really important for us, again, it kind of goes back to some, my answer to an earlier question, we need to be ambassadors for our city, and that includes understanding and knowing those businesses, being customers. I think there's also a joke with the Chamber ambassadors, every ribbon cutting, I tend to become a customer of whatever that business is. I actually moved my mom into a different assisted-living facility after going to that ribbon cutting, so I really try to engage and take ownership as a, as a community leader in those, in those businesses. I really think it's important, whether it's business or other groups, that you're accessible, that you're responsive to people, to ensure that you're understanding their issues. To me, that's the highest expectation of leadership, is that level of engagement. The business community has an important role in this community, obviously, as, not only as employers, but in providing critical services. We all hear about restaurants and the need for more restaurants and such, so it's really our job to make sure we have our arms around that and we're connected, to make meaningful impact there. connected to make meaningful impact there.
Thank you. Next up is Drew Boxrude.
All right. So start with, my wife and I are small business owners ourselves. Nothing that, you know, we can present you with steak and potatoes or anything like that. But so being small business owners, we have, we have a craft business that we operate. But it's not, like I said, it's not a brick and mortar type of thing. We did, participated in the Downtown Craft Fair last year, and that was a lot of fun. My wife also has her own business that she runs for her main job. I've also consulted with Lakeville Links, the indoor golf simulator that's over by Conron 50 and 35 in that area, in the same building as the school district. Consulted with them pre-opening and actually bartended with them. I was kind of in between jobs for a little bit there. And that was a great experience, helped them with the pre-opening with their bar setup and what all they need to do with hiring bartenders and getting all the SafeServe certified and all that. And then the other thing that really is important to our family, and we try and invite all of our friends and our extended family, is really to support all of the local restaurants and breweries and businesses. You know, it might be cheaper to go up to Apple Valley and go to Home Depot or Menards, but it's really awesome just to go down to Ace Hardware and actually talk to somebody and have them answer my question about why in the heck does this thing not work? And actually have somebody talk to me and say, okay, yeah, go to this aisle and grab it and it'll be set. So supporting the local businesses, I think, is huge. And we really try and push that with all of our neighbors and friends as well.
Thank you. Moving on to John Bermal.
I grew up in a small business household. My dad was a barber. He owned a barber shop for 42 years. He owned a barber shop in the 70s. You know what hair was like in the 70s? So we ate a lot of mac and cheese. When the 80s came and the crew cuts came back, we moved up to hamburger. So I appreciate small business and I appreciate the web there and I appreciate the way that businesses support each other. I've seen that my entire life, including Lakeville. I've supported our business community for 34 years by doing the things like going to Ace Hardware versus a bigger place, coming downtown to get something, maybe to eat. I think this is probably a very, one of the most important questions in terms of economics and keeping Lakeville money in Lakeville. When we support our local businesses, we're spending money that is going to be spent again by people who are investing their lives in our community. And so economically, it's a great way to keep, keep ourselves flourishing. In terms of Chamber involvement, I became involved with the Chamber when I became involved with the council. And what an opportunity to network, what an opportunity to help other people network. I get asked, I'd like to think about starting this. I know who to call to connect people to try to grow our business community. So I think that's, that's huge. And the events are significant in terms of building relationships that are going to help our, our business community. I participate in the events. I love the ribbon cuttings. I love the events, access and issues, those types of things. And we need to make decisions that support downtown, like design and lighting and stuff. And I'll just close by saying this, if anybody doubts the veracity of my commitment to the business community, I go to a barber in town.
Wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to our next question. This one is on support. How will you support city staff in their efforts to market Lakeville as a business-friendly destination to potential new and relocated, excuse me, relocating businesses? And we'll start with Drew Boxrude.
First of all, I'm going to say, I don't know how much the city staff needs to be supported because they're already doing an awesome job. If you haven't looked through the city website, look through the city website and all the stuff they have on there for businesses. There's great resources about what you need to do if you're moving a business here, what you need to do if you're trying to build, like build an actual building, what you need to do if you're coming in to buy an actual building that's already pre-built. They have all of the information already laid out there. And to me, that's, that's huge, already having that information out there. Some cities don't have that set up and ready to go. And I think that, one, that's huge. So great job, City of Lakeville staff. I think that needs to be supported and needs to be continued. And then the second thing, supporting the different departments with flexibility when needed. If somebody comes in with a business idea and they want to put a business that doesn't meet the exact zoning requirements on a specific corner, maybe it meets the spirit of what is supposed to be in that area, but not the letter of it. So maybe something that needs to be changed and worked through with planning and through council. And that kind of flexibility is important and, and can easily be tied up and have somebody turn to a different city if it, if it's not worked through easily. So that flexibility is, is important. And again, great work to the city staff to already have that website full of resources.
Thank you. Now we'll, we'll hear from John Bermal.
I agree. I mean, the point I would make on this question is flexibility is key. We're at this point, we're at a place, and I don't know if it's a place just in our community or a place in history, or an area where era, where technology and our community needs are growing and changing at such a rapid rate, some of the processes and policies that we have can really be outdated very quickly. And so we need to be flexible to, to adjust to that. Couple examples, some warehouses that, that went in where we did height variances. And the reason we need to do the height variances is because the equipment that they use to move stuff up has changed and become so much safer that they can put things higher. And had we not been willing to do that, those businesses might likely have gone elsewhere. So we need to be able to do that. Just recently, we approved a zoning change for a small business that wanted to move from one location to downtown. And we had the flexibility to look and act in the spirit of what we're looking at to make that happen. So I think that's very important for us to be flexible. I think we also need, well, I know, we also need to be supportive of staff publicly. I always, I always take the opportunity to tout how good our staff is because I don't know if everybody in Lakeville knows how capable the people are that work for them are. And so I think those are probably the two keys to supporting city staff.
Thank you. Let's move on to Dan Walter.
So we are really fortunate to have an outstanding team in our community development area. With Tina Goodroad and Katie Bachmeyer, we've got a lot of new energy there, a lot of new ideas, which I think are really important. And then also, I want to give another shout out to the Chamber. They work in tandem with the Chamber, which, which serves as another cheerleader for the community in articulating the values that we, we provide to businesses. So I love that relationship of working together with staff in, in the Chamber of Commerce. We, the other, this, this week at our work session, we received the Economic Development Commission's long-term vision there for some ideas in the economic development space, some really innovative stuff, but some, again, some things that may have some, some tough decisions. One of the ideas was to create an economic development authority, which means to bring more resources to economic development. But again, that means a, another form of levy. So we, as a council, I think, need to make sure we're looking with, with a forward-looking eye at some of those ideas, to be supportive where we can, to be mindful of, of the need to support that growth. And I think the other important thing, I mentioned the, the Economic Development Commission, the most important thing for, for people in a city council role, I think, is to utilize others' expertise as well. None of us have the expertise in, in what a new business in the industrial park might necessarily need, but we do have those, those, those individuals on the EDC and in other roles within the city. And we need to make sure we're relying on that expertise and not trying to, to, to fit it into maybe what our vision of a specific industry is. Finally, I do think, again, I mentioned it before, I'll probably mention it a couple more times, we all need to be advocates for our community. When there's a new restaurant that's launched in the Twin Cities looking for an area, whether we're, whether it's the mayor or members of the council, we need to be looking for ways to reach out and make sure Dave's Hot Chicken or whatever is looking at, at Lakeville and that we're singing that, singing the value of, of our community.
Thank you. Let's move on to our next question. This one is in regards to law enforcement, and we'll start with John Bermal. Local police departments are dealing with an increase in crime, opioid use, calls related to mental health, and medical alerts due to an aging population, while at the same time are seeing a decrease in law enforcement career interest. What, if anything, do you feel needs to be done to ensure that we are, one, meeting the public safety needs of Lakeville residents and businesses, and, two, attracting law enforcement professionals?
Thank you. This one warms my heart. That's my professional background. I'll start by saying this, when someone in our community calls 911, they expect an officer to show up who is well-equipped, well-trained, capable, and knows our values. And so those are some of the keys to recruiting police. I have had the professional responsibility to recruit and hire police officers. And I can tell you, it's highly competitive and it's fast-moving. And so you need to have a competitive edge. Pay is one of those. I support policies that support paying a competitive wage for our police officers, top-notch training and equipment and community support. And police officers want to know that there are opportunities inside their department. So those are some of the keys to recruiting. And Lakeville does a very, very good job with that. We have a very professional police department. They do very well with their training and the officers have lots of opportunities. I also support policies that address the programs that are front and foremost now with law enforcement, that's mental health. The county has invested in, in mental health professionals to be with the police department and to help with that. That's significant for our community and it's also significant for the police officers. There are peer support groups that are going, and those are the things that police officers are looking at when they want to work, come and work in this community. How am I supported? What's our training? What kind of equipment do we have? And lastly, how does the community support us? And it's best, I always, whenever we get an opportunity, like to, to break up the professional, well-run police department we have.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Dan Walter.
When talking about public safety, I think it's important to acknowledge my two counterparts up here, John Bermal as a career as a police officer and Drew, you're an EMS professional as well. So I want to thank them for their service in those roles. This is a community that has always had a strong appreciation for public safety, whether it's law enforcement or whether it is a volunteer fire department. We've got people that are willing to, to, to answer the call. And that is, that is critical for, for any community. I, as I've mentioned before, I think public safety has to be the council's top priority. It's what I'm hearing from people as their, their concerns. And also, just the growth of the community. We've, we've grown rapidly and we need to ensure that we're keeping pace in, in both police and the professionalism of our fire department. Like I mentioned before, those are going to result, require some investments. And this, this next council will have some, some major decisions to make there to ensure that we're keeping pace on those issues. I want to echo what John said about community support as well. You know, one of our state representatives, Jeff Woody, retired police officer, started an initiative called Law Enforcement 365 Initiative. After the tragedy that happened in Burnsville last, a few months ago, maybe, maybe a little longer. You know, one of the concerns is we want to show law enforcement that we have their back 365 days a year and not just at the time of the funerals and when we put the signs in our yards, that we want to, as, as a way of operating, we want to make sure that law enforcement knows that we've got their back. And that is one thing that would be a priority for me on the council in the future.
Thank you. Now we'll, we'll hear from Drew Boxrude.
Well, this is one that I wish I had more than two minutes on. So as, when I was at Alina EMS, running the communications center there, we use the Medical Priority Dispatch System. It's a big fancy way to say we ask you a whole bunch of questions when you call 911 for a medical. Dakota County EMS, or Dakota County Communications Center uses the exact same system. And I know that our police department here in Lakeville goes on a lot of medicals. I think that it could be cut down quite a bit. Dakota County, like we did at Alina, they know what they're doing. They've gone through certifications and I think a lot of the medicals that police and fire are sent to could be dialed back. Everybody wants to get a quick response from everything, but police don't need to go on a medical where somebody rolled their ankle at a softball game. They don't need everybody there. You just need an ambulance there to help the person and get them to the hospital. So I think that's one thing. The reason I bring that up is because on the questions that we got, medicals was mentioned on there as well. One other thing that can help alleviate some of the officer's time and is red light and speed enforcement cameras. This is a pilot that had started with Minneapolis and the State Patrol, and I believe one of their cities as well. I think that's something that the city council can, can get, be supportive of. It's not something that obviously we can pass, but I think it's something that we can support. And it takes a lot less effort and a lot less time for an officer to go through and go through the red light tickets or the speed enforcement tickets with the cameras than it does to actually sit out there and enforce it. And that is still something that's very important. And I have a whole lot more to talk about with recruitment, but I'm going to run out of time.
Thank you. We are down to two questions. The second to the last question is about workforce. We need to continue to develop and support strategies to recruit and retain qualified candidates for the in-demand positions available in Lakeville. The city is an active partner in the Chamber's Lakeville Works program, designed to create awareness of in-demand careers in Lakeville. How will you support this partnership and work to ensure that Lakeville has the services and amenities that will attract the workforce to fill our jobs? Go ahead, Dan Walter.
Well, I want to thank you for this question because I think Lakeville Works is, is a model program, public-private partnership, that I know we've touted with people outside of Lakeville as well. It's a great model. I want to applaud the Lakeville School District for being part of that and being such, such great partners with, with the Chamber. The city, as you mentioned, has been a partner in that. And I, I think we need to redouble the city's commitment to that program. We have a lot of departments within city government that would provide good opportunities there as well. And, and there are professions where there are people retiring out, whether it's water treatment, whether it's street maintenance, whether it's law enforcement. There's a lot of opportunities there that we could work with Lakeville Works on as well. I also, one of the things that's kind of, I have a background, I worked a little bit at the University of Minnesota for a number of years in higher education. And one of the things that's kind of loomed for me is that we need some higher education presence in, in the city of Lakeville as well. You know, we've got great relationships with our community and technical colleges. And I, I want to be mindful of the potential at some point to get some higher education presence here to, to support this goal. But again, I just, I want to give a shout out to Krista Jekk on this one. I believe I've sat through her Lakeville Works spiel 20 times in 21 months. And I'm a true believer, I'm a true believer. And she invites us as city council members to be part of some of the programs with high school students. And when you see the enthusiasm that they have to have been exposed to a new career option, a career option that they may not have considered, it really is, really is heartwarming. So this is a great, great initiative that we need to, to continue.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Drew Boxrude.
All right. So when I first read this question, I was assuming that it means, what will Lakeville do to have employment for people that work at Lakeville, the city of Lakeville? Is that what the question is meaning?
The question is more intended for the citizens of Lakeville. How do we create jobs or the jobs that we have in Lakeville? How do we continue to encourage residents of Lakeville to reach out to those employers?
Okay.
And yes, keep the people living in Lakeville, working in Lakeville.
Okay. So at first I read it as, how do we, as city council, encourage people to work for the city of Lakeville? If that was the question, then my answer was going to be benefits, benefits, benefits. Because if you're working for the city, you're usually looking for a job with benefits and pay is usually second. Switching to that question, what they're actually asking, the Lakeville Works partnership Switching to that question, what they're actually asking, the Lakeville Works partnership, I pretty much agree with what Dan said, and I don't have a better answer than that. So.
Thank you, Drew.
On to John.
Thank you, John Bermal.
Thanks. Yeah, I love Lakeville Works. It's interesting, when my kids were going through high school, they felt an intense pressure to pick a college, to go to a four-year institution. And my kids had friends that that wasn't the route that was meant for them, that, you know, the ability to just work and fulfill what you're good at. I love Lakeville Works because it takes and it shows opportunities for people that they may not see or hear from their peers at school. And it provides a lot of opportunities. I agree with Dan that it would be nice for the city to be able to double down and to get people working in some of the jobs that Lakeville Works program would lead them to. I think for us, it's important to leverage our networks to provide opportunities when we hear of a business that's going, boy, I just can't get anyone to come and do stuff with us while we have this ability to, we have this program, Lakeville Works. At the Fountains at Ozana, we are full of high school students. We do a Ming Caps program. I would love to see a place like ours incorporate, continue to incorporate Lakeville Works into that and provide career opportunities for people that isn't, you know, a path outside of. I'm the product of a tech school. When I came out of high school, I went to a tech school, and I had opportunities to get exposed to law enforcement through ride-alongs and whatnot, and I think it was very valuable. So I'd like to leverage our networks. I'd like to leverage our city's offerings and just make sure that we continue to provide opportunities and keep our eyes open for them. And then finally, just to be present and to support these events, I think it means a lot to these students to see city leaders recognizing what they've done.
Thank you. And lastly, the fun question. What business is on your personal wish list for Lakeville? We'll start with you, Drew Boxrude.
Phew. Okay, I have two answers. One, if it's a business that I'm going to be a patron at, then it's an all-you-can-eat sushi restaurant. Because although we have some sushi places, I would like an awesome all-you-can-eat sushi place, partially because when I go to those, I can just order stuff that I like, and then my kids can try all of it. And when they don't like it, then I can eat it. If it's a business I'm going to own, I feel like there's a really big need for like a multi-sport facility. So my two daughters play softball, and my one daughter plays soccer. So there's a big need to get into like the cages in Burnsville, or batting cages, or like the dome at North High School. There's a lot more need for that kind of facility. So that would be one that I would like to own, a big, huge warehouse that you can adjust however you want, have people in there practicing all the time.
Thank you. John Bermal.
All right. So there are certain people in this room that know what I'm going to say. But really, two things that I would say. Number one, Shields would be amazing, a large retailer that addresses a variety of people's needs. Shields would be wonderful in here, but my true heart rests with White Castle. I would love to see a White Castle in our community. So what I'm thinking is this, if we can attract and draw a Shields here that would have a White Castle in part of the parking lot, we got our set. We're all good.
Perhaps a White Castle food truck.
A White Castle, perhaps. That's a good idea. I'm going to write that down.
Thank you. Dan Walter.
Mine's a little different in that it's technically not a business, but as an animal lover myself, I think one of the things we're missing in the South Metro is the Humane Society. You know, we've got a great one in the metro, the Animal Humane Society, but if you look at their map, you got to drive all the way to Golden Valley to see dogs and cats. And I know there was one in Burnsville for a while, and the land use disagreement resulted in it closing. But I think one of the big surprises that I've had as a dog lover is the number of doors I'm knocking. I swear there's as many dogs as people in Lakeville now, because every door you knock at, you get a bunch of barking, and it's usually multiple dogs. So I think that would be a great addition, but following the precedent here of having two. In terms of restaurants, the one I would love to see is Wingstop. Many people here haven't heard about it. I pretty much lived in it briefly when I lived in Iowa during COVID. It's a wonderful, if you like wings, so.
All right. Thank you, candidates. Now we are going to move on to our closing remarks, and each candidate will get two minutes for their closing remarks. So we will begin with John Bermal.
I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity. This is a good forum for people to get to know us a little bit better. It's been good to participate with two other candidates that have the best interests of our community at heart, and I appreciate their commitment to run for office and to want to serve. You know, my priorities, people ask, what are your priorities? My priorities quite simply are the things that you elect city council members to do. Pass a reasonable levy, support public safety, support roads, support our parks and recreation to provide opportunities for people and a good quality of life. I'm really proud of some of the things that we've accomplished and what I've supported in my time on the council. The finance policies I mentioned earlier that have led to a triple-A bond rating, I hope people understand the impact that has on our community, financially positive impact, the successful park referendum, Youth Advisory Commission. We have now invited the youth into speaking into city issues. That's huge for me. The rental registration ordinance, which I believe will help us keep our single-family neighborhoods and our multi-housing, rental housing, good in terms of quality of life and condition. And the Envision Lakeville update was huge, and this transition from a paid-on call to a hybrid fire department, those are all things that I've supported, that I'm very proud of as a council that I've done. I love Lakeville. I want to continue to provide solid leadership here. I believe experience matters. And finally, if you have any questions about my positions on things, things that you didn't hear answered here, you can reach me at 612-709-0180, or go to electjohnbermal.com.
Thank you, John Bermal. Dan Walter.
Thank you. I also want to thank the Chamber again for holding this event, for bringing us all together, and also my fellow candidates for putting their name on the ballot, for stepping up to serve the community of Lakeville. It makes us a better community because of it. So I have had the rare and unique opportunity to represent the people of Lakeville now for 21 months on the city council. And I was appointed to this position, and that, to me, I think, has put a higher burden on me in terms of what I do every day, wake up every day trying to find new ways to meet people, engage the community, to listen, to put my ear to the ground and my thumb on the pulse, to understand what the people of this community want. I've tried to do that diligently on a daily basis. My priorities are three-fold: public safety, fiscal responsibility and low taxes, and quality of life, in that order. I think we can do all of those things. I know it's not going to be easy to balance the tax challenges with the needs of the community, but I feel like I'm up for that task. I am new to Lakeville. I moved here for the great quality of life, and my job on the council is to protect, enhance that quality of life, and make sure more people can have access to it. I get asked quite a bit about my yard signs, which have a bulldog on that, and I have to plead guilty, I just wanted to show off my dogs. And anybody who's talked to me for more than 10 minutes, I will get the phone out and show you the dogs. But the more, they're English Bulldogs, and Bulldogs are a rare breed. They're never the most attractive or athletic person in the room, or dog in the room, they're not the smartest dog in the room, but they're the most stubborn, and they're often the hardest to convince. That, I think, reflects a little bit about my style of leadership. I'm stubbornly committed to these goals that I've outlined tonight, to make Lakeville a better place to live, and will work tirelessly to achieve them. So again, if you want more information, www.danwalter.com has more information. I'm Dan Walter. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan Walter. Drew Boxrude.
I'll start off by saying thank you for having us here, and just want to touch on a couple things. So my previous employment, I think, is a great place to start, working in Alina and the EMS and the communications center. My work at Woodbury in the engineering department has helped me work in a city to see the other side of the business, I guess. And then I've also been a police reserve officer for Centennial Lakes up in the northern suburbs. And like these two have both said, I love this town. We moved here because, you know, we moved here from the east side of St. Paul. It was a good experience for the age we were, but we wanted to come here and raise a family. And this is what we want, and this is the place we want to be and the place we want to stay. When we were trying to figure out what our slogan would be for the campaign, we were talking with one of my daughter's teammates, and her mom said, well, your slogan should just be, well, we trust him with our kid, so you should trust him with the city. It didn't quite make the cut because it was too long, but I really liked it. So I would appreciate your vote. If you need more information about me, drewboxrude.com. And everybody should vote coming up in November.
Thank you, Drew Boxrude. Well, with that being said, on behalf of the businesses and residents of Lakeville and the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank each of the candidates once again for your desire to serve and for participating in this candidate forum. I would also like to thank the city of Lakeville and staff for the use of the facility and recording our forums. As a reminder, the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce is holding three candidate forums this year: Lakeville City Council, Lakeville Independent School District 194, Board of Director, Board of Education, and a joint forum for House of Representatives Districts 57A and 57B. All candidate forums are being conducted and broadcast live with rebroadcast on LGTV Channel 180 on Charter and on the city of Lakeville and Lakeville Chamber's YouTube channels. You may contact the Chamber at 952-468-2020 for the link. Also, an important note, the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce has not and will not endorse any candidate in any election this year. So on behalf of the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, I want to thank you for watching, and please remember, your vote matters. We'd like to see you out voting on November 5th. Thank you for watching, and have a wonderful night.